What do you want?
Delegate Assembly. Julie's assigned me things to talk about.
The special meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at six o'clock PM on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pekel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marmon.
Here.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/assembly. Item 3.1 is our focus topic, our Truth in Taxation Public Meeting. Superintendent Pekel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to invite our Director of Finance, Andy Krogstad, to come up. As Andy comes up, I would just like to note that as this board and this community is very well aware, Rochester really made a fundamental decision in support of its students and its schools at the ballot box in November. And whereas we previously ranked 15th out of 15 in local support for operating school operations, we now rank number 11 out of 15, and just below the average. And so that is a bit of broader context for the overview that Andy is going to share, as required by statute, on our taxation requirements to educate the young people of Rochester in the year ahead. So thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Dr. Pekel. And to the board, thank you again for having me here. We've done this before. We obviously reviewed the levy in September. We provided a preliminary certification. This is now the opportunity for you to provide your vote on the final certification of the levy that will be payable next year to our, by our taxpayers. As Dr. Pekel mentioned, this is a required meeting, and as a requirement, there are three items that must be part of this meeting. Obviously, the meeting itself, there's a timeline that's defined, and it has to be after 6:00 PM, which this is. There are some items that we are, we'll plan to discuss, and then there is the need for, or that, a need, there is the requirement that a public hearing or a public comments be taken, I should say. So let's start off with our financial results from last year. We reviewed this not too long ago with our auditor, if you recall, so I'm not going to get into a lot of details, but I did put it in the slide because it is a requirement. No changes, obviously, to this since our audit was complete, and I must mention there are some additional details in the supplemental data that is part of the agenda item. As we look to this year, again, these slides are very familiar. Nothing has changed. You'll see, I did highlight, though, that the tax levy this year is estimated, is planned to collect about $76.5 million. That's a, you know, a 20% slice of the pie for the district in terms of its overall revenue. So it is an important, it is an important source of revenue for the district. That's offset, then, with 429 million, 429.5 million of operating expenses. Both of these slides are across all of our operating funds, so that's taking in consideration our debt service, general fund, community education, SNS, et cetera, construction. So it's not just general fund, it's the district's budget as a whole. And then this is the breakdown, again, by fund. You'll see where our beginning fund balance, those are actuals as of the end of fiscal year 2024, which then become the beginning fiscal year 2025 fund balances. What we expect to either generate, or in this case, some of the funds will use fund balance, which is not unusual by any means, especially construction. And the $6.7 million that you'll see as expenditures or revenues in the general fund, that was part of your original budget approval in June, which is tied to the increased healthcare contribution. So that's what that number represents. And you'll see that we still maintain a very healthy fund balance across all of our operating funds, especially our general fund, far exceeding the 8% that is required by board policy. So there is a very long property tax cycle. As you know, we start this process, really kicks off with the LTFM plan that you approved in July. That really starts the process for MDE, to then do the calculations, going through the certification process, ending tonight with the final certification, collections next year, use of those funds starting in July 1 through the following June 30, and then wrapping up with the final audit. So that's about a 28-month cycle from the time that we begin to build the levy for a fiscal year until the audit is complete. So you can see, it's a, it's a pretty broad or pretty lengthy time period. And tonight, we're going to focus, obviously, on the certification portion, the final certification. The property tax goes to fund three particular parts of our operation, the general fund, obviously, community education fund, and the debt service fund. Those are the three funds in which our levy is deposited. The levy, as I've mentioned previously, is really determined by MDE. There is input from the board. Clearly, there are some board-determined items in the levy that the board has the authority to approve, but the vast majority of them are voter-approved, including building bonds and now the recently-approved operating referendum. So you can see, those are the three different types of referendum that we can legally put before the voters, and we have, obviously, passed the operating referendum and the building bond referendum in the past. All calculations, though, again, are made by MDE, and tonight, we're just asking for you to approve those calculations. Who pays? Obviously, anyone inside the district. It's spread across department owners, the farmers, businesses. Again, this is not new information, but just wanted to remind everyone that it's, it's spread across all taxpayers within the community that have, again, own property, which is assessed a value and is then subject to property taxes. So what's changed since September? Obviously, it's the approval of the operating referendum, pretty substantially by over 9,000 votes. And so that does add approximately $20 million to the levy going into pay 25, or in our case, for use in fiscal 26. That means that our, our general fund increases by, again, about that $20 million from 48 to $68 million. That's the levy contribution into our general fund. There are no significant changes in the community service or the debt service levies since we met in September. Those are relatively, actually, I think they're exactly unchanged. Just the only thing that changed was the addition of the voter-approved revenue. You can see here's a little bit more of a breakdown by general fund, by tax type. And so, not tax type, excuse me, but by, by property tax levy, by the, in this case, the revenue source. So how we can use those funds. Again, community service and debt service. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on any one of the particular line items. I'm certainly happy to ask questions. Again, a lot of detail inside of the board document itself, too. I do want to take just a couple of minutes because people ask, how, how, how am I impacted? How am I impacted? So in this particular example, let's pretend that two homes each are valued at $200,000, and the district has a $500 levy. Because those homes are valued exactly the same, each one of them shares one-half of the total tax capacity, therefore, they each pay 50% of the $500. However, if one home is, value is increased greater than another home's value, even if both homes' values increased in a subsequent year, you can see that, in this particular instance, the top home is, is paying 48% of the combined tax total of $435,000. So it's a percentage of the total tax capacity, and that's how now you begin to have a variation across the property values as, as homes, some homes are reassessed and reappraised, rather, and the values go up, and maybe others don't within a particular tax year. You'll see that variation, and this is an example of how that occurs. We do want to just highlight that in Rochester, and we use this number a lot during the referendum, a $350,000 house, the pay 25 is $1,480 worth of tax to the school district now, beginning on January 1. How does that break out? Here are, again, the various types of homestead levies and where that $1,480 goes. And about 42% of it, you'll see in the voter-approved referendum. The rest are part of categorical levies, voter-approved for the capital projects, meaning the referendum for buildings. And then there's some board-approved debt related to LTFM primarily, and a little bit extra there in operating capital, community ed, CT, et cetera. So that's how one's taxes, if you have a $350,000 house, would break down many, many components into any one particular individual's taxes. Finally, I did want to offer some of these resources. It came up in September, specifically having to do with property tax refund or property tax deferment. Those are great questions, and this is something I plan to add to our presentation moving forward. Here are some resources that our community can look into if they have concerns with either their property tax value, whether they can, whether they are, whether they qualify for a property tax refund. There's some deferment options, obviously, if you're a veteran with disabilities or some other options available to you. So this is a, I don't think it's probably everything, but it's those that I was able to easily find, and these actually will be links that take you to the appropriate areas for further information. Finally, this is it. I just wanted to highlight that this is the last step in terms of certifying the levy for pay 26. You will, if the board so chooses, approve the levy at the regular meeting right after this. But before we get into that, there would be the need for, obviously, the public, the public comment. And I'm, that is it for my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Board members, I think we'll save our questions for when we do the action item during the regular meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 3.2 is our Truth in Taxation Public Comments. Annually before adoption of the property tax levy, the public must be given a reasonable amount of time to comment and ask questions related to the proposed property tax levy and budget. Tonight's public hearing meets that requirement. Members of the community who have questions or comments on the 2025 property tax levy will be recognized. Please limit your questions and comments to topics related to the 2025 property tax levy. Reminder that Policy 207 governs public hearings, and only those speakers recognized will be allowed to speak. Comments by others are out of order. Individuals who interfere with or interrupt speakers, the school board, or the proceedings may be directed to leave. Personal attacks by anyone addressing the school board are unacceptable. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the school board. Our Chief of Schools is in the audience. If you would like to speak this evening, please raise your hand, and she will give you a number. When your number is called, please come forward to the tables here at the front of the room, be seated, and speak into a microphone. State your name, your connection to Rochester Public Schools, and direct your question or comment to the board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the front of the board table. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Speaker number one, if you would come forward to the table.
Is I with my back towards people?
Yes, please. Sit at the table and speak into the microphone because you're addressing the board.
Oh, okay. Sorry, guys.
My name's Shaleen Nelson. I live right down the street for the last 19 years. My dog's gone to the bathroom in your grass many, many times, so thank you. Um, let's see, housekeeping, real quick. I encourage you to get a sign and put it on your front door that says doors 2 and 10 are open. Because I went to the door, pushed the button, there's no sign. It's kind of dark out. And I, I, in the middle of your parking lot, right next to your building, is a sign that says something like doors 2 and 10 are open. It's just more inviting to people. My other thing, other housekeeping, my last one, is, um, I forgot. So that's that. Anyways, I've been a nurse for 26 years. I work with violent, mentally ill people. I'm glad I don't recognize any of you on my caseload. Um, I have twins that are 18, and I was blessed that, even though I lived down the street for 19 years, my very, very disabled child, Sebastian, had an awful experience when he was three, 15 years ago, with your preschool special ed teacher. It was awful, and I'm so grateful that I got to open and roll them. They're seniors this year. One can't speak ever unless you know ASL. The other one is typical. I'm grateful Byron takes your money that I pay you and brings it to their school for my boys. Sebastian will go to rail next year, so his dad and I went and toured it, and they seem like lovely people. But I'm, I'm coming tonight because I'm shocked. I don't know if you know this. So often, the people that make the decisions don't know this, that their gymnasium, for four months at Frydell Building, they can't socialize in during lunch, which is huge for very disabled people. And also, middle school for ALC is there. They could use some socialization, too, you know? And then there's no FIED for four months. I think I know why, you know, they got dumped on, right? The Frydell kids, I bet there's not one student that's on the gymnastics team, but they got the gymnastics. For four months, they're not able to use the gym at all. That's not okay. Is that my time?
That's your time.
Oh, thank you so much.
Speaker number two.
I enjoyed that speaker. You never know where people are going when they come around the mountain, and then they suddenly say something that's really true. Kids with disabilities are the ones who need the most run-around time. Good gyms and good gymnastics. So I'm talking here about the truth in taxation. This is our third and last time as taxpayers, property taxpayers in Homestead, in ISD 535, to talk about our property tax increases. And I spoke at the county with a group of people, and we also went to the city with a group of people, and here we are at ISD 535, talking about this. The PowerPoint demonstration, I noticed, again, just like at the city government, when you get a long PowerPoint, are people really listening after a certain point, when you're sitting in a government meeting, and then there were no questions about it? I'd like to see it so I could go over it. I guess it's online somewhere. I know you can't respond, but I'd like to see it online. To save us all money in the future is really important. We can't really tolerate any more tax increases. We've had every sort of tax increase in this community that a community can have. And when you think about how much it is, I think a lot of folks have lost track of the percentages. It's a percentage here and a percentage there. It's 10% here and 10% there. In terms of the city property taxes, it was, what, 10.5? The sales taxes went up and were extended 24 years also recently. And then we just had the extension of the previous referendum after the voters rejected the previous referendum by, on the, in terms of the vote, then it was extended as allowed by the Minnesota State Legislature, which was appropriate, not arguing with that. But I'm just saying, sort of enough is enough. Can we sort of tighten our belts? I was glad, I mean, I wish I could, right? But we could stand with Dr. Pekel and his new plan to have an office of accountability, or a kind of like a way of getting us to spend within our budget so we don't have budget overflows. We saw and remember what was done by, you know, the guy who ended up in federal prison. One of our previous superintendents overspent the district and wore everybody down. We need to have better services, too. I think we're all concerned when the graduation rate goes down amongst the black community, 10% in one academic year. Our test scores are down in all performance areas. Teacher recidivism has been covered in the Rochester Post Bulletin, so maybe money isn't the answer here, and more money isn't the answer. But let's just try to have the public engage more with this office of accountability, perhaps that Dr. Pekel's talking about. We maybe need a Department of Government efficiency right here in Rochester. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to provide feedback? And one final call, would anyone else like to provide feedback? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 3.3, announcement of 2025, 2026 levy certification date and time. The property tax levy, sorry, announcement of 2025 levy certification date and time. The property tax levy for school district property taxes payable in 2025 will be certified by the school board at its regular meeting scheduled on December 17th, 2024, immediately following this special session. And hearing no other business, this special session is adjourned at 6:23 PM. This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 6:23 PM on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pekel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Marmon. Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Here.
Director Marmon.
Here.
Chair Nathan? Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I move to amend the agenda to add item 4.1 recognitions. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of amending the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been amended. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/assembly. Item 3, comments to the board. It is important for the school board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the board. The purpose of comments to the board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the school board about issues that fall within our authority. The board and superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the school board meeting to sign up for a time slot. The form is available on the RPS website and on the assembly main page. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials to the board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the school board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Speaker one tonight is Joanne Barkmire.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Peckel, and Chief of Schools. I am Joanne Barkmire and I am speaking tonight as president of Rochester Area Public Schools. I want to start with a reminder of the enormous responsibility people. Every decision you make can capitalize on thousands of children. Children you may never meet, but whose futures are shaped by systems, policies, and priorities. You were elected to represent the dreams and voices of this community and to help build a future for next generation. From the moment parents hold their children for the first time, they begin to dream. Dream for them to grow, thrive, and reach their potential. Parents are the experts on their children. What makes them light up? What challenges they face? What motivates them? That knowledge and insight are invaluable. Yet I have to ask, what systems are in place to truly listen, to and value those people? Family engagement is at the center of strategic plan and the core value of national PPA. Research consistently shows that when families are included as true partners, attendance increases. Academic success rises in a tough sector. Yet right now, there isn't even one parent or caregiver on the family engagement system. Family engagement cannot be an afterthought. It must be embedded throughout the entire strategic plan, not something we get to later after other priorities. And while you're preparing to vote on the recent funding model on January 7th, families have had no chance to input, no opportunity to engage, ask questions, or share their perspective. Informational videos and surveys were created for staff and school leaders, but nothing for families. What voices are missing that could help you make stronger, more informed decisions? The dual capacity framework, which this district has committed to, emphasize relational trust and shared power. Families are not outsiders to this system. They are essential partners who bring lived experiences, expertise that schools cannot afford to overlook. Imagine what we could create if families were included as partners of the academy, a more robust, more inclusive process that reflects not just institutional goals, but the dreams families hold for their future. I urge you to consider, how will Sidesq prioritize family engagement without proper staff training on its balance? How will family engagement initiatives thrive if parents and caregivers aren't included on Sidesq and decision-making platforms? The referendum showed us that what's possible when we work together as true partners. Let's not lose that momentum. By including families at the table and valuing their voices, we create strategies that reflect the dreams of this community, not just the goals of this institution. The power of school partnerships can transform our schools, but only if families are included in the work. Let's choose to listen. Let's choose to collaborate. Let's choose to build stronger, more inclusive futures together.
It went back to the time, not another three minutes.
We have another speaker.
We have one more speaker. Thank you. Our next item is 4.1, information and outreach, recognitions. Superintendent Peckel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. It is my privilege tonight to share the release of a new award in Rochester Public Schools. As you know, when we approved our people strategy, where we discussed, and the people's strategy is a many splendored, multi-tangent initiative, but part of it is recognizing excellence and contribution. And so I am confident that in a relatively short period of time, the award that I'm going to share tonight will be up there with the Oscars, the Emmys, the Tonys, the Grammys, the Nobel Prize. I am excited tonight to share that we are launching, right here for the first time, the RPS GOAT Award, as in G-O-A-T, for greatest of all time. Now, we mean that metaphorically in that there can be many people who will earn this award. Staff, students, parents, caregivers, community partners. And I want to say that the majesty of the art that has been created by Justin Ross, an Elton Hill's parent, using not 24 karat gold or platinum, but using a beautiful Rochester Public Schools blue plastic is soon to be before you. And I am so excited to announce the two inaugural recipients of the RPS GOAT Award here tonight. Dr. Jess Garcia and Ms. Lori Sam. Now, this is Dr. Garcia's last board meeting as a member of the Rochester School Board and Ms. Sam's going to be continuing with us as the Assistant School Board Clerk, but is going to be moving to Churchill Elementary as their office manager. And we wanted to recognize you with something that is a testament to the transformative impact that you have made in this system and in the lives of our students. So if I may, just briefly, Dr. Garcia, you received the RPS GOAT Award, first of all, for being a courageous, thoughtful, and tenacious advocate for all kids, but especially our kids coming from historically marginalized backgrounds, which you have done as a board member throughout your tenure. You have demonstrated a deep understanding of the role of board governance in setting the broad direction, but then charging me and the staff, not just in the central office in our schools, with making it happen. And you've been, I think, uniquely clear about where the board's direction lies and where management responsibility lies. And I think that has happened on many issues, but I want to highlight your work on school resource officers. We've been a leader in Minnesota. We did not end up in some of the places some of other districts did. And not, of course, just with your leadership, with other board members, but we have, I think, landed in a very good place, but that needs continued vigilance. And you were very clear about the direction both that you ran for the board to pursue and then working with your colleagues, but then also really empowering and entrusting me and others to work with Rochester Police Department and our community. And that's just one example. You have brought an emphasis on what we might call, not surprisingly given your day job, the psychology of learning and showing that students' motivation, their regulation, their sense of belonging powerfully influences their ability to learn math and science and reading. And I must say, you have been an advocate for the arts in general and musical theater in particular. And so I continue to expect to see you at the musicals and other things that were there. And of course, we also, even though she didn't want to be recognized, we aren't going to let Lori Sam move on from this role entirely. And so I am just going to say that when I first met Lori, shortly after I got to Rochester and she was working at Mayo Clinic, she really came to be part of an agenda, not just a job. And that was quite extraordinary, as she and I were talking about that this morning. Really came to be part of investing in a school district, which she had served as the co-chair of our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Lori's contributions are actually very much behind the scenes in many respects, and yet those who follow the school board have seen an almost complete transformation in its operations in several years. We have a new board agenda structure that is dramatically clearer for board members, staff, and the community to follow and understand, and Lori has implemented that. We have an annual board calendar that is the envy of many other superintendents, where we can tell you exactly what issues we will be dealing with 11 months in advance. That's the, as we call it, the annual board calendar draft, which really has been Lori's work and creation. Board members don't receive, but we've also created a weekly bulletin that consolidates communication from the central office to all of our schools. That was entirely Lori's doing. And I will tell you, for school principals, it has eliminated 25 different emails coming across in Discord. And it's made it possible not only to support our very busy leaders, but also to hold them accountable, because they can't say, you know, I just missed that email. So we've said, you are accountable. Anyone who's been at a board meeting in the last several years knows that we rarely have a glitch in our technology and our processes. That's not always been the case and that doesn't happen without effort. In the office of the superintendent across the hall and also supporting the school board, there are a few moments like this, but people rarely call to say, just want you to know you're doing a great job and that's all I want. And so Lori has been repeatedly on the front line, more often helping people than taking those. But there also are those moments, whether it was during the incredibly difficult time we had last year when we were announcing the closure of schools or after somebody has made a bad snow day call, and there are certain calls. And also in the strategic management of my schedule, because certainly for me, my time is my most precious commodity. And so Lori has been able to maintain the confidence that the job is required. And so we are thrilled, Lori, that you're staying in Rochester Public Schools and owe you a great debt of gratitude and confidence. And when I come out to Churchill, I will be expecting and hoping to see the RPS GOAT Award somewhere in location there. So, Madam Chair, that was what I wanted to do. I know we have another recognition for you both that our chief of schools, Jackie Peterson, or our chair is going to share. And we want to thank you again for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
I'm going to deliver this to Lori before I say anything. Well, I'll kick off some additional words, because while this celebration is well-deserved and the recognition, it also comes with a twinge of sadness. And I'm not going to say much, because I'm going to miss both of these people a lot. Jess, you have been an inspiration as a fellow board member. Your energy and your commitment, your passion, your fight is something I always look to and I will miss seeing you at the end of the table. But I know that you will still be here to push us with your passion and your fight and your belief in doing what's best for all of our kids. So thank you for all that. Lori, you are, without you, these meetings don't happen. And I appreciate every conversation we have, whether it's about school or about your family or other things that you're involved with. And again, I'm very glad that you're going to be at Churchill and I think you're going to be getting some visits from board members more often than not. So thank you to both of you. Round of applause?
Yes.
So our next agenda item is board member committee updates. Does any board member have updates from their committees since the last meeting or any information to share? And I might call on some of you if you don't bring things up, so.
I can be the last? Do you want to be the first or last?
Whatever. Oh, no, you'll be last.
Okay.
Director Workman?
Yes, as I promised you several weeks ago, that I would bring you a report from the delegate assembly meeting. There were 122 members who were present. Unfortunately, towards the end, some of them either did not vote or had left early. But voting was by voice. There were a few that required a hand count. So if the vote majority was 62 or more, the minority vote was not taken. Eight resolutions passed unanimously, numbers, you don't have to write this down, 1, 2, 5, 6, 13, 15, 17, and 23. However, Minnesota Resolution Number 23, which came to us without MSBA recommendation, was submitted by our legislative committee and there are similar resolutions in the AMSD and MASA legislative platforms. 11 resolutions were passed with a handful of nays, but not enough to require a hand count. They were numbers 3, 7, 8, 9, 14, 19, 20, 21, 22, 24, and 27. So that leaves four that required a hand count. Resolution 4 requests funding for all school districts currently on the waitlist for Q Comp, which is the alternative professional pay system. This is something that we do not do here in Rochester. Fully funding that brings them $169 per pupil in state aid and the ability to levy local taxes in addition to $91 per student. People have, districts have been on the waitlist for years and years and years and have not been compensated for their Q Comp programs. Although MSBA recommended passage of Resolution Number 11, it failed. With 43 yes votes and 73 no votes, this resolution urges the legislature to limit the use of grants as a funding mechanism for Minnesota public schools. The rationale is that this places a burden on some districts to compete for funding and potentially, can't read, takes away valuable time and resources away from educational activities and student support. So the author of this resolution asserts that the funding mechanism should prioritize equal distribution of resources to all public schools to ensure success and access for every student to a high-quality education, regardless of their district's ability to secure additional funding through grants. Some of the conversation was around, why are we penalizing schools that do get grants and asking for the limitation from the legislature? So like I said, this one failed. Resolution 26, which came without MSB recommendation pro or con, urges the legislature to revise Minnesota statute relative to Native American mascots to grant decision-making authority about mascots to the nearest tribe of a school district or the tribe with the most children served by the district and provide funding for districts that need to make mascot change. There were a number of people who spoke to the immense cost of this, those who have, you know, high school uniforms and all kinds of logos that would need to be changed. This resolution failed with 53 yes votes and 54 no votes. So I think this really shows the importance of every single vote. And I wish that people had stayed for this. Resolution 28 passed without MSBA recommendation pro or con. It urges the legislature to rescind the K-3 exclusive discipline law and allow for dismissals and suspensions of K-3 students. The resolution to rescind passed with 70 votes. No nay vote was taken because 70 surpasses numbers 62. Resolution 18, also without MSBA recommendation, failed for lack of emotion. This resolution urges the legislature to fully fund and to bring back the rule of 94. and to bring back the rule of 94 teachers or a new form of 62 years of age with 30 years of service. As a retired teacher, I can certainly identify with the need for something like this, but it is incredibly expensive. And people felt that it would be not responsible at this point to put that before the legislature. So at the 2025 MSB Leadership Conference in January, the membership will vote on proposed changes to the delegate assembly. Information is in the MSBA Journal through January 2025. So Director McLaughlin had contacted Mr. Carlson about Resolution Number 10, Pupil Transportation Adjustment, and the impact this resolution, if enacted into law by the legislature, would have on RPS. She'll be sharing that now, along with more on our Resolution Number 23, and also Resolution 27, which addresses artificial intelligence's AI standards passed unanimously by the delegate assembly.
So thank you, Director Workman. I think one of the great things about attending the delegate assembly is we meet with people, school district, school board members all over the state, and learn things that we perhaps had not come to our attention previously, but come to our attention there and are things that we can bring back now to RPS. One of those I saw this year was this Resolution 10, which is talking about the sparsity transportation funding. The proposal is to increase the state's transportation sparsity formula from 35% to a minimum of 70% to help RPS offset transportation costs in our 217.76 square mile district and other inflationary increases in the district's transportation costs. One of the things that was highlighted in the discussion at the delegate assembly is that we are in a group of districts who have fairly large geographic areas, where we need to transport our students long distances to get them to schools compared to some of the other districts in the state. And in speaking with Mr. Carlson, emailing with him, it seems that this is something that we could look at to include in our legislative priorities to see if we can encourage the state to make this change, particularly when it would impact our funding and also help us address those inflationary increases that we're seeing in all of our transportation costs. Related to the resolution that our board approved and we presented at the delegate assembly, this is about the Data Practices Act and asking the legislature to amend the law so that it authorizes the district to require a person to identify themselves by full legal name and to amend the Minnesota Practices, Data Practices Act to authorize the school district, basically, to assess and recover actual costs of searching and retrieving government data if the requesting individual abandons or fails to inspect the data once it has been prepared. It was interesting, to me at least, that the MSBA staff did not make a recommendation on this resolution. They provided some information for discussion that gave some pros and cons of this resolution. Several school board members from various areas of the state spoke on behalf of this resolution, as did I. And I was quite surprised, actually, that this resolution passed unanimously, that the school board members were very much in favor of it. And I think that that will hopefully influence the MSBA and the other partner organizations to support this at the legislature as well. I believe that it has been included in the various organizations that we work with in their legislative proposals as well. So hopefully, that will get us some traction and get this change made. And basically, the background of this is that Dr. Bacall and Mr. Carlson and Peter Kristoferson came to the board with this as something that, when we were looking at legislative change, this was one of the ones that was highlighted as something that could significantly impact our district and other districts. And hopefully, that will become the case. I also wanted to highlight Resolution 27 about artificial intelligence standards. The proposal here is to provide a comprehensive review and redesign of the Minnesota State Content Standards to include significant one-time funding to support a major revision that accounts for the competencies required to thrive in an AI-enhanced society and world. I found this resolution interesting because it wasn't something that I had even contemplated as something that the legislature could use to impact our students. But also, and I can share this with other board members if you're interested, I found this one of the most thoroughly researched and well-written proposals. That was before the delegate assembly. It gives so much background and so many reasons to support this initiative. But where the summary comes, I thought, was helpful. I'll just read it from here. That the idea behind this proposal is the concept that not preparing students for a world influenced by AI poses significant risks, including economic inequality, reduced innovation, and a lack of critical thinking skills. To ensure that future generations can navigate and thrive in this rapidly changing landscape, it is essential to integrate AI education into curricula, equipping students with the knowledge and skills they need to succeed. And I recall back to our 2024 MSBA Leadership Conference this past January that this was a highlight topic of that conference. And it was interesting now to see a resolution come before the MSBA to approach our legislature with how to help our students, help our districts get our students up to speed on this important issue, because it is going to be a big part of their lives and their careers moving forward. And we need to prepare our students to do that. So I thought it was a really interesting resolution, and I'm interested to follow this through the legislature this year. And so that kind of takes into the legislative committee look for us to make some proposals to you soon about our 2025 legislative priorities. And I think these things will be in the mix of the things we'll talk about.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the hours that I know it put in for you to prepare for and attend the delegate assembly. So we appreciate your representation. Director Marvin?
Mr. Ruffin, Cabinet Director Will Ruffin, and Sarah Louise Henry, one of the women in his department, and I continue to work with our middle school and our high school students who are on student school board. This morning, our high school students met in this room, representatives from all three of our general high schools. And they will give you a report January 7th about what they're doing. They have a number of issues that they're focused on. But for all of them, one of their charges is to interact with students from their student bodies and to get the feedback about that issue from those students. They are discovering that's not as easy as it sounds. And it's fascinating working with these high schoolers, because they said that they realized that it's much easier to go and talk with students who you know well and who agree with you than it is to seek out those who may not agree with you or whom you've never met before. And they know that they need to broaden how they get input. Meanwhile, Sarah Louise and I are meeting with middle school students on a regular basis, too. And with these kids, 7th and 8th graders, we're specifically working on leadership skills. This month, the leadership skill is how do we get different perspectives? Same thing that high school students are doing. But with these students, we're focused on understanding that when you get one idea, it may not be the only idea, and it may not be the right solution to an issue that you're facing. So we talk about the intelligence that comes with listening to different perspectives, with trying to understand different perspectives, not necessarily agreeing with them, but how much more intelligent we are as a group when we include a really diverse group of people who we're working with. And for middle school students especially, it sometimes takes patience more than their show immediately. But we have some wonderful up-and-coming leaders in our middle schools already. So we enjoy the work, and we think it's important for these kids to know that they matter, that their voices matter, and that we are including them in decisions that this school board is making.
Director Barlow?
I just wanted to comment regarding a skip visit that was held on December 5th at Willow Creek Middle School. What an enjoyable experience it was to watch how well the school principal and staff, how they have experienced a significant turnaround in environment. And I think also in terms of the educational emphasis and priority that are in play there. One thing that stands out in my mind is the designation of a particular room called the Success Room. And that's where students go, who may be struggling, who have potential, yet who may find themselves behind a bit. And rather than that being viewed as a stigma or a bane, if you will, to their success, they actually are allowed to go into a setting that's called Success Room. And they are given the support of staff. I mentioned that in that I envisioned the role of our current direction of rethinking funding and how principals will utilize the allocations they may have. And at Willow, Mr. Fogarty, the principal, is doing a great job in utilizing his staff there and would hope that that continues to be the case. I, again, appreciate it, just seeing the turnaround that is occurring. I think sometimes we don't hear about success. We hear about struggle and, at times, potential setbacks. But rarely do we hear about and have opportunity to celebrate the great successes which are occurring in our schools. And I wanted to take this time to commend the principal and the entirety of the staff and the students. Certainly, parents play an important role. I appreciate the comment from one of our earlier speakers. Family involvement is important, and I see it in full display there. And there are other board members present. They may have one or two comments that they'd like to make, but thank you for the opportunity.
Director McLaughlin?
I'd just like to take onto those comments that I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that as well. And I definitely agree with everything that Director Barlow said. And I would add to that, the transformation of that school community. It's just night and day compared to lots of questions we had previously and concerns raised with the board and comments all the time about concerning behavior by students at Willow Creek. Night and day different from what we have heard to today. That I think that I was so impressed by seeing the community there. Everyone was so engaged in learning, and it was just incredibly exciting to see.
Anybody else on the skip visit? I just want to comment. Are your purpose of the board going to do these skip visits monthly is to see how they are implementing and carrying out their skip plan and the intentionality with which they are identifying those students who could benefit from the success lab? And then working with the schedule of the day to find the best time of day for the student to go and work and what they're working on, not just, you know, sort of going to a room and working on whatever. There's an intentionality of what they're working on and who they're working on. And honestly, those success lab teachers who are... They don't know what subject they're going to have to deal with. There was a math lesson going on in one corner and an English lesson going on in another corner. So they really have to be ready to be flexible with the needs of the students. So I'm really glad that we decided to do these skip visits as part of our board goals. And it's going to be fun to do another one in future months. Director Workman?
I've been to several of these skip meetings. And I think one of the things that I'm observing is how each administrative team has tailored their skip to the needs of their students in their building. One of the things that really excites me about our new plan coming up, the balanced budget model, is that schools will have more flexibility to be able to create conditions for success for their students. It's not a one-size-fits-all model. So I'm looking forward to the visits for the remainder of the 2025 school year.
I wanted to highlight some events that I went to last week. The Chamber of Commerce organized some meetings called Linking Leaders in Industry. They had done this during the election season for candidates for office. This time, they did it for elected officials. And we met with representatives from Broadway Plaza, Gillette Pepsi Companies, Rochester Motor Cars, the Rochester Boys and Girls Club, and Gift of Life Transplant House to hear some of their challenges and the members from the city and the county. And Representative Finstad's office was there. A lot of the comments that we had or conversations we had was around workforce. And it was just a really great opportunity to hear directly from the businesses and really connect to the chamber, which has been, you know, a good partner to us in some of our education pieces and, of course, with the referendum. And I'm looking forward to those opportunities being opened again. They said they're going to do another series for other board members who might be interested in attending. And then, does anybody else want to talk about the parent advisory council meeting? I can do it if you don't want to, but go ahead.
Well, you do it, but the parents are...
Important in Rochester.
Important in Rochester. Once a year, they invite community members and officials. And they invite people who've been involved, parents who've been involved in their programs. And I think it's impossible to get through one of those gatherings without crying, because the stories about how meaningful being accepted and supported by the programs in our Rochester Public School system that work for our littlest kids, bigger kids and their parents in 100 different ways, so many options. But so many of the parents there spoke about how it changed their lives. It saved their lives, emotionally at least, when they came and they knew they weren't alone. And it's just, it's a... It's a real gift to be able to listen to those parents who've had that experience.
And those parents' experiences are a testament to our administrators and our staff in our early childhood area. Thanks to Amy for her leadership. And invite us all again next year, because we all want to come. Superintendent, I think you have an update?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't do these updates very often, but I guess I am an ex-official member of the board, and this is not an action item. I want to give a brief update on the indoor air quality project at Mayo High School. As you know, you've already approved that investment in the bones of that much-beloved building on the long-term facilities maintenance plan. But I asked John and our facilities team to take a pause so we could take a look at the costs and the alternatives. As I'm sure you'll recall, the initial cost projection came in at $97 million. And so as I was out in the community, quite a few people said, well, couldn't you build a new high school for that? And so we've taken a rigorous look at that question. And the short answer is no. I'll tell you what the cost of a new high school would be in a moment. But the more immediate news is that I am directing the staff to go forward with the plan that you approved with the reduced costs that they were able to come up with, getting the cost projected for the project down to $88.5 million. Essentially, what we've done is decide to focus on the basics. And so some upgrades that would be nice, but not essential, to things like kitchen finishes and pool filtration, classroom entrances, band and choir room acoustic treatments, restroom floor repairs, locker replacement, pool floor replacement. A series of those things, we're going to be able to defer, because they really are not dependent on the indoor air quality upgrade. And there are things that allow us to save about $8.5 million at that time. What we will be going forward with is the critical infrastructure upgrades in the school. So electrical, mechanical, plumbing, upgrading the building automation system, which is an urgent priority, taking care of the 2/3 of the roof that needs to be replaced, some kitchen upgrades, some small, but I think promising, upgrades to our career and technical education spaces. We'll be upgrading the welding stations that are in the auto shop, making that ADA compliant for students and staff with disabilities. Some accessibility upgrades around the building. Really importantly, we'll be putting in a distributed antenna system. Anyone who's ever tried to get a cellphone call in Mayo High School knows that we have an issue which can be... Even though we don't take cellphones out during the school day, it can be an emergency response challenge. And I have to say, I was mentioning Dr. Garcia's attendance and affection at musicals, not limited to Mayo, but including Mayo. We're going to replace the iconic green seats.
Oh, no.
But I had the idea, and if Amy Munson is out there listening somewhere, could we sell the green seats at Mayo High School to raise money for the theater programming there? Because everyone I've met who's either affiliated with Mayo or has been to shows there said, I'd buy a green seat from... There you go. I'd buy a green seat from, there you go. So now to the kind of headline there, as John and the team were costing out the full high school cost of putting in a new high school, and I want to make sure that I'm using it, building new construction requires passing another levy, which I have not recommended and don't plan to recommend. So that would be a major step. But when we did the math, if we started building a new high school in 2028, which would be a very fast period to get a referendum passed and get the planning done, the cost would be $270 million, $280,44,000. So $270 million if we got it done in 2028. As board members are aware, all costs get inflated, but boy, do major construction costs get inflated. And so if we started in 2030, which in many ways is a more realistic timeframe, it would be $297 million, $984,000. So essentially, a new high school would cost about $300 million. And so we're going to get this indoor air quality and other critical structural upgrades done for about $88.5 million. You will approve all of those, as you always do when the bids come to you, in packages as we begin the process. But basically, I'm grateful to John and the team and our partners in the architecture and construction firms that took a pause, did a deep dive, came back with a very hard-headed review of the project, got the cost down in a way that I think still is going to be a really good fit for the folks at Mayo High School. And they've had some real anxiety to know if that project is moving forward or not. And so I wanted to share that we will be moving forward with the plan that you've already approved, that we just took a pause on to do a bit of homework.
Director Garcia.
Yes, hi. So I have been trying to write a goodbye speech for weeks now, and I think my heart and my brain are just not wanting to accept this reality, so I'm just going to try to do some quick goodbyes, and I'll interact with all of you hopefully in the new year. First, I want to offer towards some of the cabinet, so John, Amy, Jackie, and Carl. You were part of the cabinet on my day one, and so I'm thankful for all of the wisdom and assistance that you offered me over the last four years. You made me a better board member. And also, thank you for answering all of the impossible questions we ask you every week. You're rock stars. To Mona, I'm sorry we didn't get the opportunity to work together for years like I have with some of your colleagues, but I wish you all the best and can't wait to see all that you have left to accomplish in the district. Will, finding out that you accepted the position you now hold is easily one of my favorite memories of being a board member. I was so excited and proud, and I thank you for choosing to be here every day. Your former students and colleagues are so incredibly proud of you too, and the rest of us are never less than impressed with the work that you do. And what you've done with your department is such a flex, sleigh king, as the kids would say. To some of my board members, I would say Don, Karen, and Justin, we will be forever bonded by the intense and unprecedented experience of campaigning in 2020. I was impressed and inspired by each of you, and I'm glad that we all ended up holding seats on this board so that we could support the district and all of the wonderful kids and the staff in it. And Karen additionally, along with Julie, thank you for being my legislative committee buddies. Every meeting was like a history lesson with Julie because she has so, so much knowledge of the district. The amount of knowledge is truly unparalleled, and thank you for the times that you've shared that with us. To Jean and to Kathy, what is there to say to the two most accomplished and hard-working chairs this board has probably ever seen? I have felt so supported and cared for as a board member and as a regular human in the world by both of you, and I could never thank you enough. And I don't know how I would have gotten through the last four years without the two of you. And to my board colleagues as a whole, I can honestly say that I like each and every one of you, even if you don't vote like I do. I'll be sending you all the good vibes in 2025. And Stephanie, if you're watching, congratulations on your win and take very good care of my chair. Lori, I know that you don't like to be recognized, but I'm going to do it anyway. You are such a gift to the district and all the communities that you're a part of. Creator really broke the mold the day you were made, and I am so honored to know you. And while I will not be seeing you next Tuesday, I will keep in touch. To Kent, thank you for taking a chance on us as an interim superintendent, and then thank you for accepting a formal offer to be our superintendent. It was the right decision, and you've done a masterful job at leading this district through some incredibly difficult times. I have no doubt you'll continue to do good for our district as long as you choose to stay here. And to the community, students, families, staff, you are my reason, and I could not have done this without either any of you either. There are not enough words or languages to truly convey the full extent of my gratitude. It was such an honor to serve you. Thank you for everything. All right, no more motions.
No more motion for the rest of the meeting. Speaking of the consent agenda, items 5.1 through 510 are on our consent agenda this evening. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? You'd like to remove something?
I'd like to say something about one of them. Is that allowed?
I think you'd have to remove it for a separate consideration.
Okay, let's do that.
Which one is that?
Number one, approval of bids for construction at John Marshall High School.
Okay. So with the exception of item number one, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second?
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We will now take up item number one. Director Workman.
So my comments are all positive in that I really appreciated all of the pictures that accompanied this item. It was really, it was really so important for me to be able to see actually the condition of a lot of the foundational walls and other things at John Marshall that need to be fixed. I could see that some of them were certainly, could be a concern for student safety and everything else, and I hope that this kind of thing can continue in the future, that we can actually see pictures because it would save a lot of writing on people's part because we all know that a picture is worth a thousand words.
Okay, hearing no other comments, is there a motion to approve item number one?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve approval of bids for construction at John Marshall High School. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item one has been approved. Item 6.1 is a monitoring item. It is the Superintendent Evaluation Outcomes Component 2023-24 Report. Policy 205 requires that the school board summarize its conclusions of an evaluation of an individual who is subject to its authority at the next open meeting following a closed session where the evaluation was conducted. In a closed session on December 10, 2024, RPS school board members conducted the outcomes component of the annual evaluation of Superintendent Kent Pecel. Because significantly improving student and school performance is the focus of the 2022 through 2025 RPS strategic plan, one year ago Superintendent Pecel proposed and the RPS school board approved four areas of student and school improvement as the basis for his evaluation for the 2023-2024 school year. He included a measurable outcome for each area. The superintendent noted, and the board agreed, that including measurable outcomes in a superintendent evaluation is rare in Minnesota and across the country and is not a core component of the framework for evaluation jointly developed by the Minnesota School Board Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. There was also discussion regarding whether statistically significant increases in outcomes could have been expected in one year. As researcher Michael Fallon has noted, studies have shown that it takes about three years to turn around an elementary school, six years for a high school, and eight years for a district. By turnaround, I mean a significant increase in student achievement. The superintendent provided his self-assessment regarding achievement of these board-approved goals. Number one, deeper learning goal. Eighty-five percent of the participants on the deeper learning team in RPS schools and programs report on a survey that they are confident that they understand the three elements of deeper learning, mastery, identity, and creativity, and are confident they can integrate those three elements into their teaching or other work with students. Result, goal achieved. On a psychometrically valid survey of deeper learning, 16.1% of team members reported they are somewhat confident, and 83.9% report they are confident or very confident. Goal two, multi-tiered systems of supports. Increase the percentage of students who meet the criteria for on-track in reading on the Fast Bridge Assessment in grades two through five by 3.5 percentage points. Result, goal not achieved. Results for on-track, which are defined as scoring in the low-risk and very low-risk categories of the Fast Bridge A Reading Screener, were, for grade two, the, sorry, the growth measure in fall of '23 was 59%, and spring of '24 was 62% for an increase of three. Grade three, fall '23 was 65%, and spring '24 was 63% for a decrease of two. Grade four went from 68% to 60% for a decrease of eight. Grade five went from 66% to 61% for a decrease of five, with a grand total of fall '23 for all grades, a decrease of two from 64% to 62. The goal was not achieved across the broad spectrum of students in grades two through five, although students in second grade made notably more improvement than third through fifth graders. RPS has focused intensive professional development and curricular resources in the early grades as it implements the new science of reading research approach. There is reason to believe that as RPS provides all elementary teachers with increased training and as younger students move up through the grades, reading skills will improve at all grade levels. Goal three, restorative practice goal. Decrease the number of Level II disciplinary infractions that occurred during the 2023-2024 school year by a statistically significant amount over the number that occurred during the 2022-23 school year. Result, goal not achieved. 5,120 Level II infractions occurred during the 2023-24 school year, while 4,343 Level II infractions occurred during the 2022-2023 school year, which is an increase of 17.9%. The superintendent suggested that in retrospect, he would have recommended a different goal for this area, setting the goal of creating safe and inclusive schools by reducing the number of suspensions and demographic disparities among suspensions. Suspensions would be a better outcome measure of district-wide strategies related to discipline and behavior. Level II data reflects the valid but very different reasons that individual schools use and report Level II infractions in order to address issues at their sites. Work on standardizing that process in order to get a more accurate picture continues. Goal four, post-secondary pathways. Significantly increase the percentage of RPS students overall and/or students in at least two demographic subgroups who graduate in four years in the class of 2024 compared to the class of 2023. Results are pending. The Minnesota Department of Education has not yet released graduation rates for the class of 2024 and has announced the earliest date it will do so is likely February of 2025. Observations and conclusions. When Dr. Pecel was excluded from the closed session, school board members processed the data provided. When evaluating the status of these goals, the board agreed that although the superintendent's goals were tightly aligned with the strategic plan, district schools prioritize their focused 2023-24 actions on much more site-specific needs in their school continuous improvement plans. Progress achieved at individual schools or for student groups were in many cases masked by using a district-wide aggregation of outcomes data measures. There was unanimous agreement that Dr. Kent Pecel continues to be the leader that RPS needs and supports. He is absolutely transparent about goals that have not been achieved and outcomes that have not been met, and importantly, he is adamant that those goals and outcomes remain critically important. It has become increasingly clear that for Superintendent Pecel, good enough is simply not good enough. He has intelligent plans in place, many already being implemented, that will significantly improve both school and student success. Real positive changes are happening in Rochester's public schools under Dr. Pecel's transformative collaborative leadership. The school board fully supports our superintendent and is deeply grateful that he has agreed to accept another three-year contract beginning July 1, 2025.
Jean was going to offer this.
She was ready to go. All right. Our next item is 7.1, Prep for Action, the Rethinking Funding Proposal. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. If I can ask for that magic clicker. Board members, there are very few changes in this distillation of the balanced budget model from the one you've seen most recently. We are in the midst of a significant and final revision of the model, but I do want to take time to do my best to give a concise summary of the model and highlight one significant shift that has come out of the feedback that we have received to date. So you can see on the screens, this is on our school board website. Just to recap where we are in the process right now, as board members know, this originated in our strategic plan, and we've been doing analytic work through partnership with our technical assistance provider, Afton Partners, for many months. You have seen several versions of this proposal. Here tonight, we are actually just about to embark on analysis of feedback that we're getting from all staff, from board members, and from those national technical assistance providers, leading up to January 7, when we're going to be asking you to vote on the final version of the model. And as we've stressed multiple times, that model will not be the end of the story. It will influence the parameters that you will set for development of the budget for the '25-'26 school year. And then we'll spend many months for every school, every department, every program, working out the details before we bring you a combined budget in June of 2025 to ask you to approve the budget for the upcoming school year. So that's where we are in the process. As feedback has come in about this proposal, it has seemed important to go back to the two key insights that really launched the proposal in our strategic plan, and Director Workman was just highlighting one of them a moment ago. The first being giving schools the resources that they need to meet the unique, meet the unique needs of their student populations. I really appreciated the comments that board members made about their trip to Willow Creek. And as you know, it's not just the behavior and discipline that has dramatically improved at Willow Creek, so has reading and math achievement. And so it's a case study of how those two things can go together, and providing that school with the resources to meet those needs while still guaranteeing a high-quality common educational program across the district came out of our strategic planning process. And then, of course, as a number of commenters tonight have stressed from different perspectives, we want to be sure that we are using public resources efficiently and putting the district on solid financial footing for the long term. We continue to check each version of this model against the criteria for the new system that we, you approved at the outset of this process. And when we bring you the final proposal on January 7, we will outline how we think we've met each of those criteria, and I think we are on track to varying degrees to do so. I wanted to pull this slide out of one of those early presentations that we got from Afton Partners because unlike several versions of this which have been RPS staff-produced, this is our national expert distillation of where Rochester sits on the continuum between schools being completely autonomous and having the flexibility to basically use dollars and staffing in any way that's legal, to being highly centralized where almost all decisions are made at the school board or superintendent level. You can see from that star there that that's where the Afton Partners team assessed our current budget model, and you can see in the orange boxes some of those key attributes of both extremes. Finally, as sort of preparation for this budget model decision, it's important to note that we are also on the cusp of a new school improvement planning process, one that builds on the progress we've made in the last several years, but that unlike our current model in which schools essentially select district-defined initiatives and action steps, schools engage in a rigorous needs assessment, both of data and of stakeholder feedback, including parents, and make those decisions in their school improvement plans. And the premise of the balanced budget model is to resource that strategy. Now here on this slide is the main change in the model since you've seen it last. It is not a change in the math underlying the model. It's not a change in the technical specifications. But as we talked about the previous version, in which you'll recall there was a district-required and a centrally managed category, it became clear that in particular at the school level, people were tripping up over the distinction between the two. And from the perspective And from the perspective of a principal, a teacher, a counselor, there was no distinction. All of those positions are allocated centrally to buildings, and buildings do not have the flexibility in this proposal to shift them. We were separating in the previous version of this model, general fund positions from special ed and multilanguage learner and other specialist positions, when in reality the proposal is both would continue to be allocated centrally by formula based on the number of students and the demographics that they serve. And so in this revised version, the first category would be called fixed school staffing. And in that model, the finance department would allocate those positions to schools, and schools, while certainly they not only would be empowered, they'd be expected to focus the work of those staff on the needs of their students, they would not be able to shift those allocations, because that's how we have a common core educational program across the system. If you skip to the next column, though, that's where we get into the flexible school funding, and that's where we would still allocate those funds according, of course, to transparent and verifiable formulas, but where there would be greater flexibility for school principals to make decisions with those dollars based upon the school improvement plans that would be developed with a three-year plan updated annually to reflect changes in the data and other conditions. We've added that third category, specialized programs, to fully represent all aspects of the district. As you know, in our previous discussions, we repeatedly had to say, well, what about Phoenix? What about rail? What about LEAP? And so we've tried to account for the vast majority, if not all, of our major programs that are not directly in traditional K through twelve schools. Those would all be funded centrally in that specialized program category. And then, of course, in the central office, we really have got administrative and support staff in the offices that are listed there on the screen, and we've created a link to an org chart that more fully identifies all of the functions that are contained in that central office. So the model, as it will be proposed in January, would now have those four categories: fixed school staffing, flexible school funding, specialized programs, and central office. And it's important, as always, to note that the first three categories are people and functions that are all at the school level. They're not at the Edison Building, they're not centrally located. It's important to say, before I move on from this slide, that while it is very detailed, and there's a lot of text on it, it is not exhaustive. And so there are other positions that were listed in the last version of the model that we shared with you that were even more detailed. We will present you in January with an updated, highly detailed listing of the positions and budgets that would be included in the version that you'll see in January. This has not changed since you've seen it, but it's really important to continue to be sure both that board members are aware of the changes that are included here, but also some of our stakeholders from various perspectives. The flexible funding in the general fund would be one of the primary ways we fund that second category in the budget model of flexible school funding. There would be a ratio of one hundred and thirty students per elementary school, one hundred and seventy-one at middle, and one hundred and eighty-eight at high school that would determine part of the allocation of those flexible dollars. The difference in the ratios there that would be utilized is that funding a secondary educational program is more expensive than an elementary program. State of Minnesota recognizes that, because they also provide us with more funding for those secondary students than elementary students. So you've seen that before, that's part of how we would pay for that second flexible category. The second category is that compensatory education revenue is another way we are funding that second flexible category. Those resources are now currently allocated eighty percent to the school sites, and the proposal would take that to a hundred percent in order to maximize that flexible funding. Title I funding, which now is concentrated in a smaller group of elementary schools and a few secondary schools that are seventy-five percent or more free and reduced-price lunch rate in their students, would expand to include more elementary schools and our middle and high schools. The logic there being that the same students that we're trying to engage in our current model are with us in middle and high school, and so now we would have those resources to utilize. The shift in our funding for post-secondary enrollment option students, CTEC and PTEC, has generated some discussion in the community, and so I really want to be very clear. What RPS would be moving to in this model is how the system is supposed to run. When the state of Minnesota in the nineteen eighties created the post-secondary enrollment options program, it was never intended to pay for high school students taking college classes from a separate pot of money that didn't reduce the money the high schools got to educate those same students. It was always intended to divert the dollars from the high school to the post-secondary institution as the way to cover the cost. Had that not happened, it's impossible to imagine PSEO having spread as widely as it has in Minnesota, because you would not have had a sustainable funding stream. I think the chair told me she counted it up, and we were looking at six million dollars in RPS funding for PSEO in the last
Three years.
The last three years. So we have, for different reasons, been holding our high schools harmless, contrary to what the state system was designed to do, and it's just not a sustainable strategy. And so this would be a measured change where we'd take a three-year rolling average of the number of students in each high school who enroll in post-secondary enrollment options or our CTEC and PTEC programs, and diverting some of those high school dollars to cover that cost. It is not a cut to the high schools or a break in, breach of faith with what we committed to in the referendum. It is shifting our system to work like it's intended in the state, and the only way that it really is financially sustainable to do so. I continue to be very confident that many Rochester students will continue to take PSEO classes, and that this will be a more reliable way of sustainably funding those classes going forward. And then finally, our staff development funds would be thirty percent retained largely within the Office of Academics that Mona Perkins leads to fund those system-level professional development activities, and seventy percent at the building level. It is important to note that, as is happening right now in our implementation of the Science of Reading at the elementary level, there may be instances in which we tell schools, you must devote your site-level professional development dollars to this critical priority, because, for instance, it's a state mandate, or we decide it's a central mandate. But on the whole, professional development funding would be a source of flexibility for school-level decision-making. So a few key points as we head into the final weeks, admittedly with a break for the holidays, of work on this model before we bring it to you in January. First, really critical reality, under the balanced budget model, almost all schools will see increased funding and would be able to maintain current staffing should they choose to do so. So staying in the staffing structure that exists in our schools would be the option for the vast majority of schools, if that's the path they think is most in keeping with their school improvement plans. It's important, though, to note that a few schools that are experiencing significant enrollment declines and that currently receive that high concentration of Title I funding from the federal government would see a modest reduction, and we would be working with those schools during the budget process in February, March, and April to confirm those reductions and then help them plan for those reductions. The enrollment reductions would be happening in our current system, even if we changed nothing, and so it's important to keep that in mind. If we don't shift funding as enrollment shifts, we risk becoming one of those school districts where you have large numbers of schools that don't have enough students to generate the revenue to cover the cost of their programming. Number three, high schools, as we were just talking about, could maintain their current staffing levels despite that reallocation of funding for PSEO and CTEC and PTEC, because they are all going to see an increase in this budget model if you approve it. So again, high schools could choose to maintain their current structure. When we look at the current model, and we'll further refine this for you before January, schools would have between twenty-five to thirty-five percent of their total funding in that flexible funding bucket. I think it's fair to say that's enough to launch programs, to shift supports, to do innovative things, but it is not so much that we would see schools departing from the core educational program that the board would be approving, and approves with the course catalog, and approves with our educational strategy, certainly in our next strategic plan. And then really importantly, and we will make this explicit to you in the materials for January seventh, every commitment in the referendum from November of 2024 will be maintained and can be maintained in the balanced budget model. I know we had asterisks in a slide last time about the referendum, and that was layering complexity upon complexity, and so we'll map out separately for you how the referendum is advanced by this model. And this is a feedback form that we've sent out to all staff that is open and live this week. We'll be looking forward to reviewing that information. We've said, what are your questions? What do you see as the strengths? What are the weaknesses? And are there any suggestions? And we'll bring you a summary of that feedback as we did with the administrators in January as well. So Chair Nathan, that is the most recent update on the balanced budget model, and I want to thank, as I do every time, particularly the finance team and the team in our research and improvement office, who've been really central to making this happen.
Board members, questions, comments? Director Barlow?
Just, I think, a basic question. Earlier, there was in our board packet or district website, a listing of positions, and I noticed it's not there now, but I did have a question based on that, which I believe you'll be able to answer. Under general fund, I noticed that there were six teachers on special assignment, and I saw the associated responsibility, I support each of those. I did have a question. I know in the past there have been principals on special assignment. Do we no longer have any? Okay. And then I also wondered, in that, the listing of positions were represented as being covered under the general fund. So I was curious, are there other positions that are out there that aren't funded under the general fund? If so, how many? I don't need to know at this moment, but I would be curious to know how many there are.
Yeah, thank you, Director Barlow. We pulled that from the website, because today we got feedback that it was confusing people, because that list, well, it's very astute that you were tracking it, the list was from the last version of the model, and we've now updated the model but not the list. So we will bring you the list updated. And yes, the primary sources of funding other than the general fund in this model would be the ones I listed on that slide, minus achievement and integration from the state. That should be there, too. So it's compensatory, Title I, achievement and integration are the primary three funding sources that are resourcing this. Then there's also reimbursement for special education services and those funds, which really are retroactive reimbursement of those funding streams. But the big three, in addition to the general fund, are compensatory, title, and achievement integration. And we could definitely bring you in January a distillation of how many positions would be, we project funded by those sources in the new model. It'll be imperfect to project, though, because, for instance, the purpose of that flexibility would to give them the option to say, you know, maybe instead of one, I don't, this is just hypothetical, instead of one teaching position, we want to add two education support professional positions. And that would be the decision that they'd be making this spring, based on their analysis and their data. But we could certainly bring you a projection of what we think the positions would break down as.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Marvin?
I think we saw this before, but I'm just wondering, before January seventh, can we get a review of the makeup of the group at each school who will be making the decisions for that site? I mean, which staff, not names, but which positions will be included? And then, when will each school need to submit their plan for approval?
This year will certainly, Dr. Marvin, be a transition year, insofar as the answer is, all of this has to be dramatically front-loaded, because the federal Title I requirements mandate that this whole planning process happen in order for a school to receive Title I. We now are doing that intensively in a very small number of schools, and if this is approved, we're going to be doing it in many more of our schools. The only way we can make that happen is if the whole system moves earlier. And so we would begin our school improvement plans, really, in a, not for this year, but a year from now, they really need to be done by March, like, really done. And the budget, you're still going to approve the budget in June, but we really have got a very clear, and they need to be highly developed before March. So yes, we can bring you a timeline, because the reason I say, of course, this year will be a transition year is that we're still in our current system and moving into a new system, so this year is not going to be seamless. We actually have not yet shown you what I think you're asking for, and it's very important that we bring it in January, which is, what would the configuration of a school improvement team be?
Was I imagining that?
No, we haven't. We've said to you that that's forthcoming, we haven't brought that to you. We've been getting feedback on that, we've been having discussions about it. I think that I am likely to recommend, we'll give you a recommendation on that in January. I don't plan to include that in the resolution on this budget model, but I think it's important contextual information for you to know. I think we could, we have, we should take more time on something that you would be approving around that school improvement process, but we would certainly give you an overview of what the current thinking would be along those lines.
Thank you. Director Cook?
The framework in this latest model and kind of separating out the specialized programs makes a lot of sense to me and makes much of this clearer than it had been, so I think this is a really nice way to conceptualize it. I'm wondering about the mechanism for achieving balancing of the budget in years going forward. And I've been kind of assuming that these ratios of funding equivalent FTE positions at each of the different levels of the system would be important in that seeking of a balanced budget in, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Do we have a view from the administration right now on how we think those ratios may change over time, or if they would change over time in the event that there's less funds available for these discretionary or flexible purposes than in the next budget year?
I'm going to take a crack at that best answer, but if John or Andy, you either want to correct me or jump up, I want to invite you to do that. I think there's two ways that those ratios could change. One is if we did not anticipate the ratios we need to achieve both financial stability on one hand, a balanced budget, and tenure requirements on the other. When we set those ratios, we did so to achieve both objectives, that we know that using average salary with this ratio of staffing across the district, in the macro, it comes up to a balanced budget, and given that the vast majority of the positions are still allocated like we allocate them now, we believe we can meet all tenure requirements for staff that have tenure, because, of course, we have an obligation to have them have a position. Were that to not prove to be the case, for instance, if this spring we are doing the detailed work with every site and department, which we would do, that could be one reason we might have to revise those ratios. Right now, and this has been a major focus of Afton Partners' work with us, we think that the ratios are actually an improvement on the ratios that John and the team have been using, because we've updated what were historical ratios that they'd been actually using for the staffing project, I think, John, particularly at the high school level, you, and middle school. So we actually have improved in terms of how we're allocating staff more tightly to fit the number of students and the course offerings we have. So that's one way that the ratios could shift. The other way, though, is if this board actually, and I think as part of a next strategic plan, this very much might happen, you change that educational program that we're offering, but that would be a separate educational discussion about our course offerings, about our school structures, about our calendars. Should the board approve different educational models as part of a next strategic plan, we would then need to go in and revise those ratios to be sure that we actually are resourcing those models. So to give one example, were we to choose to have a major investment in more career and technical education classes? We would need to go in and actually take a look at that resource stream, because those teachers are different licensed, the facilities' needs are significantly different, we would have to take a look at that. So that's just one possibility that comes up. Another, which, I mean, certainly anyone who's been in a high school teacher for the last few decades, there's always a question of a block schedule and a different alternative schedule. I'm not suggesting that's something I'm recommending, that has a different price tag from the schedule we're currently using. We would need to revise the ratios if we were going to actually have that kind of a shift. So I think it's a long-winded way, Director Cook, of saying, I could see these ratios shifting. One, if we realize that either the bottom line of the system required it, or tenure obligations required it. Right now, we don't. required it, or tenure obligations required it. Right now, we don't believe that's the case. And then down the road, not next year, that the board was shifting the course offerings that we have, or the core configuration of our school day or school year. I think the system, though, is designed to make it so we could change those ratios without changing those four buckets. Like, we would still have a finance system. We would be changing the ratios, not our core funding approach. And then we would be having a discussion about getting the ratio right, and what autonomy do sites have with that allocation and what don't they. But I think what we want to get right, I hope, this January, is the core structure of the system. And then we can refine that system over time, as, you know, Director McLaughlin was mentioning, the advent of artificial intelligence. I mean, what if we do start having large numbers of kids who are working with an AI tutor under support from an education support professional, as opposed to one teacher, 28 kids? Like, that's a very different model, and we would suddenly need to have a discussion. Again, I think we could retain this system, and we would be talking about how we allocate those positions. I don't know, anything? Either, it's probably not fair for me to, it's not a study session, but I, obviously, we're below some areas of my expertise, but it seemed to be okay.
No, that was really helpful and makes sense. So thank you.
I wanted to ask a question about the, since the high school and the PSEO has been an issue. When I look at the four categories, there is clearly a fixed school staffing for secondary, based on the student load limit of 160 students. So that will continue to be set based on what, at the high school, what courses students register for, et cetera. But in the description of PSEO, it says, three-year historical averages used to determine charges to high school. Is that a, is that changes?
Charges, meaning, it could actually be either. It's not a typo. It would be, what level of funding is a high school going to be docked, based on the fact that the kids weren't there? And so it would be a three-year rolling average to say, this percent of the general fund dollars that you might have otherwise received is going to be shifted to cover the cost of PSEO.
But that would come out of the fixed school staffing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would not be flex. We would not have schools saying, like, you can take a PSEO class and you can't, for financial reasons. We certainly should be doing that for educational reasons. But no, that would be, we're allocating the FTE to staff in the fixed category. Then if a student, that's just actually one reason why we have this year really said, kids have to register for PSEO early in the spring. We were living in a situation where kids were deciding in August, I'm going to go take a class. And while on one hand, we understand kids get new ideas and things, the master schedule was built. So we've really been saying, no, you need to register early. Even though the college will still allow you to enroll, we build the master schedule. And when you build that, and then you have kids who are not there, you know, it might be nice for that individual teacher and students in a smaller class, but we pay the cost in the big picture.
So when you calculated the estimate FTEs in one of the previous memos, did you look at the difference between the number of students who are attending PSEO part-time versus full-time?
Andy's nodding yes.
Yes, we actually counted the number of courses. So it wasn't based on individuals, it was based on the number of courses. So if a wonder one missed a course at high school and if he took a course at college, we made that calculation.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, board members? We have one more meeting.
Thank you.
Our next prep fraction item is 7.2, review of the school board handbook. We had an overview of the updates to the handbook at the December 10th study session. And tonight, board members, you just have any chance to ask any more questions or have any more discussion on the updates, or anything else that maybe you think we missed, that you think we need to add before we vote at the January 7th meeting? Should you have any grammatical or punctuation changes, as Director Marvin let me know that she has, you don't have to raise them tonight, but feel free to send them.
Are you saying you don't want to have a discussion about subordinating conjunctions? I think that's what I'm hearing.
I'm going to make an executive decision and say no.
I think that's a wise decision.
Are you in favor of the Oxford comma?
Yes, Oxford comma, yes.
So, anything? I'm glad everybody likes the handbook. All right. So we'll vote on that in January. Item 8.1 is an action item, approval of the school district property tax levy payable in 2025. I will read the resolution, ask for a motion and second, and if received, we can have discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 Rochester, Minnesota, being a school district in Olmsted County, Minnesota, that there be and is hereby proposed a levy upon all taxable property in said school district, a new calendar year 2024 school tax for fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $98,893,929.33, as follows. General Fund, $67,954,67,954,219,48. Community Services Fund, $4,463,395,60. General Debt Service Fund, $26,475,477,25. For a total certified levy of $98,893,092,33. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Our next item, 8.2, is another action item, the approval of the annual board calendar draft, ABCD, for 2025. We did discuss this at the December 10th board meeting. And a reminder to the community that even though the board will take action to approve the ABCD tonight, it is always a draft and can be changed at any time. School board agendas are no longer in draft format, only after the agenda is approved by the board at the beginning of each meeting. The resolution is be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the 2025 annual board calendar draft, ABCD. Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Other business? There were no questions submitted by board members. The current version of the ABCD is already loaded in the assembly. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? I'm going to assume not, since we just reviewed it for the whole year. Upcoming board meeting dates January 7th at 5:30 PM as a regular meeting, January 14th at 5:30 PM as a study session, January 21st at 5:30 PM as a regular meeting. We have a special session on field trip fees on February 4th at 5:30 with a regular meeting immediately following. And hearing no other businesses, meeting is adjourned at 7:57 PM. Should we get in this to you to do the rest?